You're live.
We're live. Okay, it's still 7:30. We call the meeting to order. And let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States.
United States.
And to the Republic.
Republic.
To the stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice.
For all.
Okay, with that, we have the entire board present. We will conduct business as, excuse me, I fixed his chair, as scheduled. First. First item on the agenda is additions and deletions and/or deletions to the agenda. We have no additions. We have some proposed deletions. And I'll introduce the first one to delete action item number one. We just aren't, because of what I'm going to call it the turmoil in Dale's. Last week, we had no time to work on that, so we'll delete that with the board's permission from tonight's agenda.
I support that.
From the board?
I just support that.
Action item number one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then, let's see, next one was. Consent number four, and that would be the easement for DT. I guess, I don't know who that falls under, but I'll just. We didn't have the paperwork on that, so we'd like to delete that from the consent agenda. Any comments from the board? Okay, okay, so, support, thank you. Those, those in favor of removing, of deleting action or consent agenda item number four, please signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Supervisor, well, Mr. Supervisor, we'll try to have that on the agenda for next meeting. I.
Okay.
Have to get the easement agreement through legal and also we're waiting on some utility information for the easement design. So it should be before you next month.
Okay. And then, let's see. Number eight, we weren't ready for that. I'll let Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, I would like to delete action item eight as Kim still has some paperwork to prepare.
Support.
And we'll bring it, we'll bring it back on the, in two weeks, on the 28th.
Okay, good. Okay, moved by trustee Nelson, seconded by Treasurer Van Oss. Any discussion? Do those in favor of removing action item number eight? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that will be deleted also. Any other additions, deletions to tonight's agenda? Okay, with that offered, those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None offered? The agenda stands amended. With that. Let me open, before we go to public comment, a lot of. Discussion, I'll use a kind term on social media about the, what the perceived property sale. There will be no property sale. It was not on the agenda tonight. It's not going to be on the agenda. The board never moved on it. And the potential buyer with you is offered. That is not on the agenda. I'm going to talk more about it later in my supervisor's report. So with that. We have no presentations scheduled, so we'll entertain brief public comment on tonight's agenda items. Take it away.
Yeah, I'm not going to call on people one by one since there are so many people in this meeting. So does anybody have any public comment they would like to share?
You, you're the, you're the host there, Brian.
Doesn't appear anybody's raising their hand. Nope.
Nope, okay. All right, well, let's move on and then into tonight's consent agenda. Mr. Treasurer.
As I said, Brian. Likes to move for approval of consent agenda 20-025, which includes the minutes of the July 13th, 2020 regular meeting. The check register dated through September 11th, 2020. Appointment of a new member of the Island Beautification Committee. The easement has been removed and. Planning Commission appointment.
Support.
Okay, thanks. Moved by Treasurer Van Oss, seconded by Trustee Budney. Any comments from the board on tonight's consent agenda? Okay, with none offered, those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 Offered, that stands as approved. With that, we're going to move into the, I'm going to call it the Jim Bundy Show because we've got a public service work going on. And I'll let Mr. Bundy take over, start with action item two. Mr. Bundy?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Based upon the recommendation of the Groseal Department of Public Service Commission, the Groseal Township Board hereby asking the township board to approve the purchase of equipment. To rebuild one of three primary clarifiers at the Groseal Wastewater Treatment Plant. Via sole source purchase provision and to commence the process to bid the installation of this equipment. Cost of the purchase of the equipment shall not exceed $272,600.
Support.
Support it. So moved by trustee Budney, seconded by Supervisor. Bill, I guess now Derek takes over.
Well, I, I'm going to let, believe me, Derek's going to do a lot of talking tonight, too. Yeah, and this is just, you know, we have a wastewater treatment plant with a lot of equipment in it. A lot of this equipment is, dates back to close to when we took it over. And it's just wearing out. They have done an excellent job of putting Band-Aids on it through the years so that we haven't. Had to replace it and kept it going by repairing it, but it's just time where everything is worn out. And this is one of many things you're going to see now and in the future as. As, as these things just need to be replaced to keep our sewage system running. And with that, I'll turn it over to Derek. And let him. Say a little more.
Thank you very much, Jim. Just to pick up where Jim kind of left off. We have a facility that we've squeezed a lot of life out of and there are a few things that we need to start doing over there. And we've prioritized, at least in this fiscal year, some capital improvements that our operator has indicated and our engineers have indicated are priorities for us. The two action items before you tonight are those priority items that we have established in our 2019 and 2000, I'm sorry, our 2020 and our 2021 fiscal year budget. The first is our primary clarifier system. So we have four tanks in our primary clarifier system at the wastewater treatment plant. They all, all the equipment associated with them pretty much date back to when maybe 50 years ago or so, and they've exceeded their usefulness, useful life, that is. So we ended up bringing the engineers in to review the replacement of that equipment for the primary clarifiers. And we discussed the project with the equipment vendor, the sole first provider in the area, and that is Hamlet Environmental. I have individuals on the meeting tonight that are representatives of that, that company, Jennifer Wagner, Randy Hamlet. And I think Nate is here too, yeah, Nate Hunter. So they can talk a little bit more in depth about the, the technical aspects of the project. So I'll, I'll try to explain it in a Cliff Notes version for you, though. As was mentioned earlier, their primary clarifier, so this really is the first step in the wastewater treatment process. These tanks, the effluent comes in and it's the first step in removing the solids from the effluent stream. Those wastewater. Concern of the length of the equipment delivery. What we're recommending is to purchase the equipment directly from the supplier. Under this sole source provision and then take that time that that equipment is being manufactured to go ahead and bid out the installation. So what you see before you tonight. Is the request to purchase equipment for two of the four tanks that we have, and then we would take the time that that equipment is being manufactured to go ahead and bid the installation. So. If the budget allows and the install cost for the single tank comes in where we expect it to at about $150,000. In this fiscal year, we should be able to buy the equipment for both tanks, install one, and then do the install of the second piece of equipment next fiscal year. If for whatever reason, the bid for the installs come in over what's estimated, we would scrub the purchase of the second piece of equipment. And as the action item indicates, we can do that up to the point that. The, the equipment is ready to be manufactured. So we've got quite a bit of time to back out and we don't anticipate. That the bids that are going to come in for the install are going to occur after that timeline has been, has been basically exhausted. So what we're asking for tonight is $272,600 for the purchase of those two pieces of equipment and then also authorization to go ahead and bid that install. There's a lot of information in here regarding. The equipment that we're installing. The quote that was received for that equipment, the correspondence with the manufacturer, pictures of the equipment. The budget for this fiscal year and then also the engineer's recommendation as well as additional information about the sole source provision. So. I'd like to answer any questions you might have in addition to Jen. About the technical aspect of things. I guess I'll open it up to you guys for any questions you have.
Derek, go, go over again on that sole source because I'm sure that's, you know, there's some people are going to have questions on the sole source and, you know, why this is advantageous to us. And why we're doing it now. I mean, I know you did, but if you could just. Over it again. I want to make sure everybody understands. Why we're not going out.
So Hamlet Environmental is the dealer, the sole source or the sole dealer in the state of Michigan for the equipment that we're installing. So they're the dealer for the variety of different pieces of equipment manufactured by Polychem and I think the other one is Brentwood. So. They're the only vendor, the only dealer in the state of Michigan that supplies this type of equipment. So in essence, they're the sole source for us, for this equipment. I know that there were some concerns from the DPW side, the DPW Commission with regards to purchasing the equipment ahead of time. And then bidding out the install. I think that Hamlet addressed those concerns in their presentation to the DPS Commission and they did it very well. Hamlet not only is the supplier of the equipment, but they also provide pre and post installation support and support during installation. So they will work with whatever vendor we. You see, the concern is the support during install. They have a long track record of supplying support for the install, which is included with their pricing. So. That wasn't enough of a concern on our end to decide to go a different direction. Another point to all this is by doing a purchase direct from the supplier. Normally, when you bid out the purchase of the equipment and the installed equipment, you, you would normally have a markup from the successful bidder. That's doing the install on the equipment itself, and normally that's right around 15%. So in essence, the township could receive a savings by doing a direct purchase, which is basically the savings against markup for whatever bidder. Would be doing the install if they were providing that equipment. So probably a little bit more than what you wanted, Jim, but it gives you a little bit more data about kind of the decision making behind this.
No, that was, that was good. Thank you.
I'd also like to make, make you aware of. The schedule and the difference in schedule between a direct purchase and a bid purchase. And you can take a look. Back in your packet. Direct purchase. Versus a purchase after the fact with a vendor that would bid on the install and the equipment. We're looking at equipment delivery of May 31st, 2021. If we did the formal bid with a contractor supplied equipment versus a direct purchase, we're looking at equipment delivery of January 25th. So we're really saving about four and a half months on the timeline. So this isn't just a decision that's being driven from a financial standpoint. It's also being driven from a, a schedule standpoint. We want to get this work completed. We've squeezed everything that we can out of the equipment that we have. We're, we're playing with house money at this point because any day we could have a failure over there, which would ultimately be an emergency repair, which is going to. Cost a lot of money. So, you know, we want to try to do this as quickly as possible. Many of these capital improvements were things that were slated actually last year. But got, had to get pushed for a variety of different reasons to this fiscal year. So timing is of essence on this situation, so.
Did, a quick question for you. I, I don't know if any of the board went over and actually looked at what's being replaced and how it all works. If you haven't, I would suggest that you do that. It, and, and you'll quickly see when you see what's, what's on the surface that it has to be replaced.
Any other questions, comments? I looked through it. It's, again, the, the overriding factor is we got to keep this plant. Continuously operational. We don't have a backup. So we can't divert, like some communities can divert to another, through another sewageway, through another route. We don't have that option. So. Preventive maintenance is always the best. And this looks like it's staying on that capital improvement, capital maintenance schedule that. We've, we've been trying to maintain through our DPS Commission, so. If it's, if it was what we need to do. You know, we, we need to do it. Comments from the board? Derek, anything else we need to know? Your, your, your vendor experts, anything else we need to know before we?
Jen, Randy, Nate, you guys, anything you want to add at all or?
No, you really did a great job as far as covering it. Thank you all for allowing us to be part of your meeting tonight. We, we have been working with the facility for quite some time. Like was mentioned, if you get a chance to go check it out, please do. It, it provides a lot more insight about all the different mechanics that go into the facility. We have numerous tank inspections there too, at Hamlet along with the manufacturer. So there was a great deal of thought and collaboration to try to get together the best next step for you folks. So we really, really hope that, you know, that it makes sense and, and then goes along with your guys' budgeting.
Thanks, Jennifer. Randy, anything else to chime in?
Um, you know, I only just want to add that, you know, we've certainly been involved in capital improvement projects like this. I've been doing it since 1988 when I got into this business and a long history of working with your engineer. A long history of just successful projects all the ways around and a lot of thought, as Jennifer had mentioned, was put into. The equipment that was to be installed here, the features of that equipment. Such that it was going to be for the long term and actually a fairly significant improvement in operations and maintenance for your plant staff as well. So. Not only is it a necessary replacement, it's actually to some degree upgrade because of technology and so forth. So. It should give a longstanding reliability and durability for, for years to come.
Okay, so in the end, it's an investment and it's an investment that'll pay benefits. Any more comments, questions from the board? Okay, with none offered, those in favor of, based on the recommendation, the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission, Groseal Township Board hereby approves the purchase. Of equipment to rebuild one of three primary clarifiers at the Groseal Wastewater Treatment Plant via the sole source purchase provision. And to commence the process to bid installation of this equipment. Cost for the purchase of equipment shall not exceed $272,600. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion will carry. Thank you so much. And now.
Now we'll move on to.
Continuing.
Continuing and just some, some different equipment, but basically the same, same, same background. Based upon the recommendation of the Groseal Department of Public Service Commission, Groseal Township Board hereby approves the purchase of equipment to replace both final clarifier center drives. At the Groseal Wastewater Treatment Plant via the sole source purchase provision. And to commence the process to bid the installation of this equipment. Cost of the purchase of equipment shall not exceed $75,784.
Okay, moved by trustee Budney, seconded by Treasurer Van Oss.
Same type of thing. These are the. Clarifiers outside the ponds, the, where the arm goes around and around. The drives and the motors are, are shot. And. Need to be, need to be replaced. And with that, I will turn it over to Derek and you can enhance what I've just said.
Bore, bore everybody with details, right? Yeah. As Jim had mentioned, it's a similar type of purchase, design of purchase as to the action item that you just passed. The logic.
Derek's going to have to get a better connection.
Yeah.
Just the same, as far as saving four months or so, the need is the same. It's just a different area of the plant and a different part of the process, but. The equipment is about as old as what's on the inside and. Top of the pond, rather than having the skimmer actually operate, which is, it's not the best way to handle that type of treatment process. We'd like to get these, these items back and running as originally intended. So. Once again, this is a purchase of the equipment only, and then we would hand it over to the engineers to bid out the installation of it. This is another item that was listed on our capital improvement schedule and in our budget for this fiscal year. So it's a priority project of ours that was spelled out in the budget.
Uh, anybody, Randy or Jennifer, David, anybody want to fill in the blanks where Derek kind of went silent for us?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Yeah, I, I, I think what he was kind of informing was that the process for the decision was very similar. Similar to the primary equipment, we're able to shorten the lead time as well as save that, that contractor markup. By a direct purchase with the equipment. Sales tax is another thing that you guys are able to save by purchasing direct through West Tech. We approached it very similarly with the primaries, talking with the operators and the engineer. It's going to be a, a direct replacement with fairly minimal changes. And then ultimately, it should, it should help for some maintenance benefits for the plant too, so they can better focus their time elsewhere and keep that critical piece of equipment up and running. And then, and like he was saying to, it kind of pieced in and out, but the, the lead time is substantially shorter. When we have the ability to, to move things along a little sooner and we're not going through that full bidding process. We will have drawings available for contractors and then Hamlet will also be providing the same support as far as onsite assistance. You know, installation assistance and then support after the fact.
Out of curiosity, how long does the installation take? Will, will the system be down while you're installing these drives? With the plant?
So the intent was to take one down, one clarifier at a time. So one clarifier would be down, it would be drained. They would replace the mechanism. And they would, they'd really refill it and then go to the, to the other clarifier.
So it wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a total shutdown? Okay.
No.
Any other questions, comments? From the board?
And Brian, I just, just had to add to that, with one shutdown, there won't be any, we won't see anything, you know, it won't have any backlash on us at all. Everything will run smoothly.
Your usual guarantee, right, Jim?
Yeah, yeah, my guarantee, exactly.
Now that's. Good to have backups, okay. With that, with no other comment offered. Based on the recommendation by the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission. The Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby approves the purchase of equipment to replace both final clarifier center drives. At the Groseal Wastewater Treatment Plant via the sole source purchase provision and to commence the process to bid installation of this equipment. Cost for the purchase of equipment shall not exceed $75,784. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None offered? That will carry. Thank you once again. Making progress now.
Now we go into what everybody loves, rate increases.
Yeah.
That's why we call them adjustments. It's softer. Based upon the recommendation by the Groseal Department of Public Service Commission, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves a modification of commodity rates on water. For fiscal year 20. 2020 through 2021, from $11.18 per thousand gallons to $11.57 per thousand gallons.
Support.
I'm sorry, who supported?
Mr. Nelson.
No, okay, so trustee Budney moved and trustee Nelson seconded. Let's.
And I'm merely going to say that this is, you know, this is what. What we do each year as, as the Great Lakes Water Association passes onto us a rate increase. We, we have been and, and probably will be passing that. That rate increase onto our users so that we can keep the system going. And with that, I'll ask Ann and/or Derek to hop in and. Give a little more depth to that.
I'll just add that the, the fiscal year budget was established based upon. A, the rate as adjusted and that rate as adjusted, as Jim had mentioned, is, is based upon the increase necessary to cover the cost of the increase from GLWA. That township charges and the increases that were assessed by the township. They follow pretty closely with what the GLWA increases have been. So I just want to remind the residents that every one of these township board members, they pay the water rates, the same as you or I. You know, nobody wants to pay higher water rates, but this is a a non-for-profit business. Essentially, we're not banking money, we're not diverting money, we're not charging anything more than what it costs to operate the system. We don't have stockholders and we don't have shareholders and we don't have dividends to pay to pay. So nobody's getting rich off an increase. It's just cost increases in order to account for those that are passed along to us from the the wholesale charges that were assessed by GLWA.
Derek, you may have, you may have said this, but you blanked out and we didn't hear everything that you said, but I I I may have been telling someone incorrectly yesterday and I wanted wanted known that the this rate increase, it all goes back to GLWA. This is just to cover, explain that, that this is just to cover the.
Yeah, the 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 rate that we proposed for this fiscal year was completely and entirely based on the the amount needed to charge to cover the increase in expense that GLWA was passing along to us in our rate increase. So every year GLWA comes out with a an increase letter to us. We calculate out what kind of rate increase we need to pass along based upon our sales projections in order to cover that increase. And that is exactly what we've.
All right, Derek, come on back.
Yeah.
This, this is, this is not a perfect technology yet. But Jim, was there anything left out yet?
No, and what I what I did want to point out to everybody, that the the rate increase that they the people will be paying will all be going over. It's just to cover that cost. There's, we're not getting anything out of this.
Okay, any other comments, questions from the board? With none offered, you know, business decisions, based on the recommendation by the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission, Groseal Township Board of Board of Trustees hereby approves a modification of commodity rates on water for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty-one from eleven dollars eighteen cents per thousand gallons to eleven dollars and fifty cents per thousand gallons. Those in favor of this rate adjustment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, not offered, that will carry. And I will be paying those higher bills also.
And.
Jim?
One more. Based upon the recommendation by the Groseal Department of Public Service Commission, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves an adjustment to the sanitary sewer fixed maintenance charge by two point three percent from forty-four dollars and ten cents to forty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents per quarter for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one.
Or.
Okay, moved by trustee buddy, seconded by treasure van Oss.
And I and I will turn this over to Derek again, but very briefly, as you saw in the first two action items, we're we're looking at some big dollar amounts to fix our our equipment over at the wastewater treatment plant along with the other equipment that's going to is on our list to replace down the road. We have an ACO with the state that we have to cover, which will be coming in the future as well as our our asset management plan and what that's going to cost us. So we looked at this and and basically said, do we do we start getting a little bit now? Or do we wait and have a big adjustment down the road? Either way, we're going to need the money to keep the sanitary, the wastewater treatment plant, I mean, moving along. That's very brief. Derek, I'll let you take over.
Yeah, I think you put it pretty well. We've got a significant amount of capital improvements that are going to be coming up over the next three to five years over at the wastewater treatment plant. I think that we will be doing over the next couple of, I'd say probably three to six months, some pretty in-depth conversations regarding ACO mandates, capital work that's going to be necessary. You saw a copy of a proposed budget for the next couple of years in the last couple of action items. So you'll see from that, I mean, we've got probably pretty close to about ten million dollars in capital improvement work that's going to be required between now and two thousand twenty-five. So we're trying to get ahead of some of these capital improvements, trying to pick away at them the best that we can. We do have some some fund balance that we've been drawing on for the past couple of years and we will be this year and next year as well. But we've been counting on the fund balance to the tune of about six hundred thousand dollars for some of these capital repairs. So there's definitely a need for the generation of of dollars to be able to do these capital improvements. I think to Jim's point, rather than having a large adjustment, we want to kind of try to do it in incremental steps and then review where we're at and then potentially take a look at other funding sources for some of these large dollar figures. The the increase that we're looking at under this action item is two point three percent, which amounts about fourteen dollars per year for the average consumer. So it's adjusting the the fixed rate that we charge for our 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 sanitary sewer charge from forty-four ten to forty-seven sixty-three. So it's a little bit different than the water charge. It's not a charge increase on commodity, but it's a charge on the fixed cost, which is is something we rely pretty heavily on for these capital improvements. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but this generates about fifty-five thousand annually for those cap, for that capital work. And as you can see from the past couple of action items, you know, we don't, we don't take expenditures over at the wastewater treatment plant or in our water system very lightly. We try to do our best possible to try to maximize these dollars anytime we do capital improvements. We try to look at inventive ways in order to to maximize those dollars because we know how hard-earned they are by our taxpayers and the people that pay these these water bills. That's why you see things like direct purchase to try to minimize the cost of the equipment and bidding out the installation to try to minimize that cost as well. And we'll continue to do that in order to try to minimize these increases and additional revenue necessary to get this work. So.
Okay, thanks, Derek. Pretty much explains, you know, how we how we pay for this stuff, how we, all the residents generate the funds to keep this system working for everybody. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. O'Connor? Can you unmute her?
Thank you.
Okay.
I needed that reminder. Derek, your point is well made and we understand the concerns to save money, but we also remember why we had to build this plant in the first place and the fines and consequences we faced when we had effluent into the river. So, you know, it's it's a balance that we that we operate and the plant has done a really good job for us in preventing those kind of issues in the past few years, decade. And and you have done, and the DPS team prior to you have done a really good job of maintaining that plant and keeping the costs, you know, effectively low and still giving us the benefit that that plant was built for.
That's a very good point. Just so the residents know, many of this, much of this work is state mandated. We have an administrative consent order that's going to require us to do a lot of the capital improvements that we've been talking about. And then on the water side, you know, the state is no longer allowing communities to ignore their infrastructure, their water, their sewer. They are requiring through permitting and a variety of other methods that you must keep up on your infrastructure. I think every community in the state of Michigan is in a similar position as Groseal Township. I know that everybody's in a similar position relative to restrictions and mandates on maintaining our assets, whether it's through doing asset inventory or rate structure studies. Everything is changing relative to both of the utilities. So this is something that's going to continue to be a point of discussion now and into the future. So.
Derek, thanks for that reminder. Was that that was a state mandate in the last, gosh, within the last two years, the capital capital asset management plan. Every community has to have one. We've had, we've had capital improvement, capital maintenance plans going back as far as I can remember. Obviously, a lot of communities did not, therefore the necessity for the state mandate, but it it does kind of put the the magnifying glass on on us and all the other communities as to how we're going to take care of these these infrastructure assets. And I I think we're doing a good job. This is an example of getting ahead of it rather than waiting for something to break to fix it, fix it, get it repaired, get new stuff in before it's broken and finding a way to pay for it, again, a little bit of the time rather than a massive increase when we have a massive repair. So I think we're moving in a way that the residents would expect us to. Any other comments, questions from the board? Mr. Valdesto.
Derek, I know you don't have any control over this, but you mentioned a fact that we'll be spending upwards of ten million dollars over the next five years. Is that correct?
It's estimated at that, yes.
Well, this is, obviously, this is not a question for this current board, but moving forward, how does anybody expect the residents of this township to pay ten million, ten million dollar, ten million dollars in cost to improve the the wastewater treatment system that we don't have an option here? That has to be done and and rebuild roads and any other number of things and infrastructure on Groseal. I I think it's be a matter of importance moving forward that some plan be be put forward so we so we know what is what it's going to cost each resident here and how you intend on paying ten million dollars here, ten million dollars there. Well, we really don't have that type of that type of ability to to generate to generate those monies. I think it's important that this board, that this board can consider this and and move it on to the incoming board. It's a very, this is a very important item. It's a very large cost. And again, if we can't afford to do certain things right now, how are we going to be able, how are we going to afford it, you know, moving forward?
Tom, I don't disagree with you. I mean, these are, these are large capital improvement with large ticket figures on them. You know, I can, I can tell you that DPS understands the rate structures alone. You know, commodity charges are they're they're like gas prices. So you cannot continue to increase water rates and expect to get a corresponding increase in revenue. And we understand that. It's a it's a market-driven system. You know, people eventually will just quit using any water or try to do their darndest to minimize it and and that rate structure can cannot support these kinds of costs. So, you know, there will be a lot of discussion. I can assure you that. The DPS Commission and DPS Department understands that a plan needs to be brought forth. And matter of fact, we've been working on that. So I can assure you it will be discussed and there will be a lot of conversation about how we 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 take a bite out of that apple. So.
All right, I gotta, again, I I know that, you know, there's only so much you can do. There are things that you're mandated to do. It has to be done. But this is a, that's just one part of this puzzle. We have to look at the entire cost moving forward to maintain our community, make it attractive for people to come here and and not and not have to bear exceptionally large costs. You know, you were talking about this last thing generating fifty-five thousand dollars a year. Well, fifty-five thousand dollars a year into ten million dollars is a long way down the road. So.
Well, yeah, and they're two different things, Tom. And and yeah, that's a, you're absolutely right. I mean, this stuff has to be looked at and the DPS Commission has been looking at it and is planning. Part of the problem is you never know. Tomorrow, the state could come down and and double that ten million. And and we have no control over. We 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 just have to do, we have to be vigilant, we have to be watching this, we have to be planning for what we do know and and be ready for that unexpected thing and.
Well, those are real nice words, but it's not a plan.
Well, well, Tom, yeah, you're right. It's not a plan and that's all we're talking about today. Not, we're talking about this rate increase. So.
We understand, Tom, that we we understand that, you know, we didn't need to make sure that the township is affordable to live in and 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 my goal is try to try to accomplish these improvements with the most minimal impact to the residents from a from their own household budget standpoint. And and I know, and I know that's, I know that DPS is priority as well. And and I can assure you, we have been looking at it, we have been talking about it, but none of this stuff happens in a vacuum, as you had mentioned. There are other parts at play when it comes to affordability of the residents in this township. It's not just DPS, it's everything else. It's roads, it's recreation, it's it's all the different departments and all the services that we provide, they all have to work together because that's the total cost to live in this community. So so it's it's more than us just formulating a plan, it's us talking about our plan as it relates others' plans and the long-term planning of the township and where we want to be by ten years from now. So.
And I appreciate, Derek, I've asked you questions in the past, but I've never questioned. I've never questioned you, you know, your intentions. You do what you have to do and I I understand that completely. But this is, you know, the dollar figures that you threw out there is a is a very large dollar figure. It doesn't change the fact that we that we have, we have to do it. But it has to be taken into consideration moving forward where this money is going to come from. I again, I'm not questioning you. I I I've always believed your intentions have been in the best interest.
No, those are all very valid points, Tom. Your your points are well taken and very valid. So.
Thank you. Derek, let me ask this, this ten million, I know it's that that figure is is kind of a pop-up, but I think the board would like to see if you could compile for us just a thumbnail sketch on the maintenance you anticipate, the improvements you anticipate and assign a dollar figure to it and distribute it to the board. So so we know what you're going to have planned next, you know, the the priority, the sequence of these things, just so the board has a, not a real detailed plan, but some concept of where DPS is going, where the expenses are going to be, what we can do to break the news to the residents, how we can make these costs as palatable as possible, make sure we get the best return on the investment. Because this ten million figure was a new one for me.
Well, we can, we'll definitely do that and we'll be having lots of conversation. In the meantime, if you guys want, refer to page ninety-one and you can kind of see a breakdown of that ACO work that I'm kind of referring to. It listed as ACO work twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five, and that'll kind of give you a breakdown of where those dollar figures are coming from. And and that ACO work that we're referring to, that's the administrative consent order work that we're just doing the engineering and figuring what those costs are right now. So so this is just the tip of the iceberg with regards to the conversation and and we're going to be very busy with this over the next six, eight, twelve months. So. And Brian, I'll I'll be sure to do that.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm looking at page ninety-one and your proposed work. Not in any kind of, yeah, there it is, nine and a half million. So, but you don't give it, I mean, there's you've got over a two-year time period. That's pretty, pretty aggressive schedule, but.
And and some of that's already, we've already started the engineering on. So, you know, some of those, some of that work, you know, it it takes four years to get to the point that you need to have it completed. So. But once again, I don't want to bore you guys with that tonight. We'll we'll talk about it in depth at a later date. So.
Nine, nine and a half million dollars is not boring. That's, that's kind of an eye-opener, Derek.
Mr. Supervisor. Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, if I could add one thing, I want to remind everyone that the state of Michigan, under that consent order, wanted us to do all that work last year, the year before and the year before that. And we showed them our debt load and all the projects we've had going and were able to defer this out until those dates, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, because we knew we didn't want this to be an additional tack. Because we, we knew we didn't want this to be an additional tack on to the residents. So, we're trying to keep our, 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 our payment schedule for you will as steady as possible. And we have some options ahead of us that the commission needs to study and, uh, that all will, will, will take place. Since then, the newest item is doing the detailed review of the asset management, which will add to the different projects in the future as well. But it's, it is definitely something that has been, um, looked at very carefully, um, especially at the commission level the past several years.
I remember we looked at it when the ACO was coming out hot and heavy, uh, as an unfunded mandate, but, but it was the mandate. So we tried other ways of getting around some of the, uh, treatment plant shortcomings and they were all rejected. We were basically told what we were going to do and how we were going to do it and we're trying to do it. Anyway, that was my assessment of our dealing with the ACO and we had the, we tried the bioactive flow and they wouldn't accept that. We got stuck with all sorts of, again, not exactly an unfunded mandate, definitely unfunded. So anyway, uh, good points. Um, we'll make this happen going forward and we'll make sure the new board is aware of all these looming issues also.
Uh, yes, some of them are.
Okay. Okay. Um, other questions, comments from the board? Okay, none offered. Based on the nation for the gross sale department, public services commission, gross sale department trustees hereby approves an adjustment. The sanitary sewer fixed maintenance charge by 2.3% from $44.10 to $47.63 per quarter for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. Those in favor of this, uh, rate adjustment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey, opposed. Okay, none offered. That will carry also moving on then to action item number six. I guess we'll ask, uh, Treasurer Van Os to introduce.
Uh, yes, based on the recommendation of the airport commerce park commission and the, uh, airport's commerce park manager, the township board will authorize the purchase of a QT technologies M dash 4000 card reader with installation costs not to exceed $14,745. And this will go on the fuel farm, uh, out here by, on the airport tax. Uh, the account is coming out of the maintenance, the budget maintenance and is a budget purchase.
Support.
Hey, move by treasurer, seconded by trustee Buddy. Um, miss, I, we're going to have Mr. Duker fill us in on this, uh, purchase.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Uh, yeah, this is the purchase for a new fuel terminal credit card machine at our, uh, fuel farm here on the airport. Uh, I had to go back and look at the history books. We've been with QT Pod as a single source supplier since 1998. Uh, is when we bought our first terminal with them. We upgraded that in 2008 and, uh, here we are again in 2020. Unfortunately, we've squeezed every ounce of life we have out of this terminal and they are no longer supporting it. So we're, it's basically a forced upgrade. Um, for aviation dispensary setup, there's really only two games in town. There's QT Pod who we've been with, they're a Colorado-based company. And then there's Fuel Master. There's a couple other smaller ones, but, uh, the pricing's comparable. We already are very familiar with the software with QT Pod. Uh, and their service plan is great. We haven't had any issues getting parts or, uh, 24-hour service through this. So, um, this is basically to set up our 24-hour fuel, uh, terminal system. So if a plane comes in at two in the morning, they're going to have access to it. Uh, and then we have staffing, um, part-time from like nine in the morning until 5:00 PM, uh, Monday through Saturday to help uh, as well. And they'll be using the, the same terminal that they're. The only other infrastructure upgrade that's going to get done with this, um, surprisingly enough, our current system is actually on a phone line dial-up system. So there's a phone line, old school phone line that's run all the way from the fuel farm, uh, to my office, which is about 150-yard run. Um, that has been experiencing a lot of, uh, issues over the last two years. I think in the last year, we probably had six outages where we actually weren't able to run credit card transactions for at least a day. Um, so it's been quite an inconvenience to our tenants and, you know, incoming jets and, and travelers. Um, so this will be a good upgrade. We're either going to, we need to get it analyzed, but we're either going to upgrade to a, uh, 4G system that'll just do it over uh, cellular data, or there is a new system that, um, we need to check the range on, but it may be able to beam the signal to my office. Um, straight chat from the terminal to process all those and then download the sales in-house for our accounting to, uh, reconcile. Um, but both the costs on either of those systems are very similar. So, um, that's going to kind of get finished, but the, the budget will cover, uh, either one. This was planned and, and quoted at the beginning of the year and is budgeted. Um, so everything came in as, as expected.
Cost of, cost of doing business or continuing to do business. Um, any questions, comments for Mr. Duke or, or the treasurer? It's a, I guess it's a, an overdue upgrade and, uh, again, cost of doing business. Okay, with no further questions, comments, based on a recommendation by the gross seal airport commerce park manager and the gross seal airport commerce park commission, the township board hereby authorizes the purchase of a QT technologies M4000 card reader with installation and it costs not to exceed $14,745. The cost of the reference purchase comes from accounts, uh, as listed in number 5810-53-93100. Building maintenance, $14,745 budgeted for fuel farm purchase. With that, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That will carry. Okay, some controversy, but let me, uh, treasurer, do you want, it's, it's airport. Did you want to introduce the, uh?
I'll introduce it. Uh, based on the recommendation of the airport commerce park commission, the township board hereby cancels the existing agreement approved on 3/9 in airport recreation department and returns possession of airport commerce park, uh, building number 39. And there's a history and purpose. When I get a second, I'll go into that.
Support.
Okay, move by treasurer, seconded by trustee Buddy.
Hi, uh, you know, unfortunately, this, this act is not one that I look forward to at all simply because I was one of the big movers to get this thing done in the first place. Uh, however, it's been seven months. We're getting close to winter time and nothing's been done. They haven't turned to, they haven't signed the agreement. Uh, haven't turned the, the bills and utilities over to the recreation department. And we need to at least move forward and winterize this building as soon as possible. Uh, if it isn't going to be used and it doesn't look like it's going to get used this winter. Uh, so we talked to, you know, everybody was kind of up in arms about what, what, what do we do about this thing? I said, well, we can take it back and take over the, take over the operation. And then the, uh, chairman of the commission and the vice chair had a conversation with incoming supervisor. Uh, he led them to believe, or at least they walked away from that meeting believing that he was not happy with the agreement at all anyway. And he did vote against it originally as well as one other board member. So this is really an opportunity, uh, uh, you know, we've made the building work up until now. We'll figure out a way to make it work from here on out. So, I'm, I guess I'm giving the board a chance to back out. And that's all I have.
Well, in, in some deference to rec and I, I, Kim doesn't even need to go to bat for, much of rec was shut down by COVID. And many of the recreation type activities, I mean, Kim could come up with a tremendous plan tomorrow and the governor could shut her down the next day. We just don't know where that's going. We have to prepare. The worst case would be we have to pickle off the building for the winter. Uh, Mr. Duker mentioned he has some potential interest in limited use of it that he would manage as part of the airport commerce park. But rec is, is just, uh, up in the air. We don't know what the governor's going to allow on a day-to-day basis, which kind of leads me into my other tirade is why the legislature isn't taking over those legislative responsibilities, but I've already vented on that. But we, I mean, again, with her emergency orders, stroke of a pen, any recreation plan that Kim had set up could be shut down the next day. And, uh, you know, we, we'd get back to who's going to pay to pickle off the building. So that's kind of the worst case scenario. We have to pickle it off for the winter. Hopefully the, the dust settles on all these restrictions. Uh, either the, either the, uh, airport manager, the, you know, the commerce park manager or should somebody gets a useful, uh, productive use of that building? And we, we get, we, we move forward. But right now we have to plan on the worst case, which is we don't know what the governor's going to do. We don't know what she's going to allow us to do, but we do know that winter's coming. And, uh, the commerce park is best qualified to, at this point to, uh, uh, you know, manage that, 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 that asset. Any comments, any of, I mean, those are my thoughts. Mrs. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Make sure I'm unmuted. Um, yeah, I, I guess I would also like to hear from, uh, rec director Kim O'Farrell and liaison Jim Nelson about, um, recreation commission views of this.
Absolutely. Um, good evening, board. Um, you know, in defense for the CRC and supervisor Loftus, you're, you're right on the money there. You know, rec has, you know, we survived the summer, lots of changes, lots of orders, pool open, pool closed, golf, this, that and the other thing. Um, and even monitoring the governor's orders with our current plan is definitely a challenge and that's basically what I've been doing all summer. Um, you know, so saying that I've not done nothing is, you know, incorrect. I'm trying to monitor what, what the offerings we do have for the residents, um, along with planning fall events that are safe for our community. Um, and, and just, you know, keeping things safe right now. The business of, of recreation, it varies and it is a lot different from what maybe other managers are doing. Um, we are directly dealing with the public face-to-face every day. Um, so yes, it's been a challenge, but we've had a great summer, no doubt about that. Um, where CRC sits and myself, as we spoke, um, a lot about this on Thursday when we found out um, on last Friday that the airport wanted to take this away um, or back into possession. I don't want to say take it away because we're all on the same team. Um, you know, we spoke about, you know, what, what's right for rec right now. And again, I stood up March 9th to the township board and two days later COVID hit. I presented a plan to the board. I believed in the plan. And I only, I, I did this for the community and that was my only mission behind um, overseeing that building. And I will say today as your recreation director, I do hope um, that whatever the airport decides, that it will be used as a recreational facility. I believe that the CRC and myself should be part of that. I'd like to work together with the airport um, in any way that I can to help the community. I, that's the only motive I have behind the project. And I do want to say that. Nothing has changed since March 9th. But yes, supervisor, um, the recreational activities are very limited right now. You can play tennis, you can play pickleball, minimum of 10 people inside of a building. And I know most of you know that, you know, my plan was for a fitness center. That was my main drive. They're operating at 50% capacity right now. And that space inside the tennis center is very, very small. So, um, and without revenue coming in, it's very hard to, to pay those bills. Um, I just received a water bill. We had a leaky toilet, got that taken care of. But we do need to generate revenue in order to pay the, the bills and all those types of things. So, all I ask is that I would love to work with the, the airport. I want to see rec in there. Um, and that's all I'm asking is to work together as a team. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Phil, thank you. That, I mean, that, I think we all kind of feel this, well, hopefully we all feel the same way. But some of this is just out of our control at the moment. Mr. Nelson, do you have a comment?
I just want to say it was well stated by Kim. Uh, she gave you the overview of the situation. And obviously we can't control what happens in Lansing, so we're doing the best we can.
And this seems like, we'll see how the vote goes, but to me, like, I'm sorry, Ted, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I, I didn't mean to say anything disurging to Kim or the recreation department. I understand their problems. Uh, my only concern in, in the commerce parks only concern is this building needs to be taken care of. Uh, I'm sure that going forward with the new board, uh, well, I'm not sure, but I think that with the new board, you will have the opportunity to work if with any kind of programs that are going to be set up. I think it will be a recreation facility. I think that's the general consensus of the, the commerce park commission. Uh, and I'm sure you'll have the opportunity to work in it. And I didn't mean anything disparaging. I'm just saying that the reality is it's been seven months and nothing was done. So regardless of the reasons for that, it is now getting close to November, October, and we need to take care of that building. I think that's our fiduciary duty for the township. So I didn't mean anything. You, Kim, because I think you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other, uh, comments on, on this, uh, custodianship of building 39? I see none offered. Those in favor turning custody of, uh, building or, yeah, operation of building 39 back to the airport commerce park commission, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mike, you got it back. Take good care of it. Keep it in good shape for Kim when she, when we finally get released from this stuff and we can get a rec program going. Um, that could put tonight's action items. We got a lot of, we got a lot of business done tonight. Um, let's move on to reports. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Um, fasten your seat belts because I do have a, a lengthy report tonight. Um, the first thing I wanted to address is, um, the communications department of the township and just remind people that it remains as it always has been under the direct supervision of the township manager and the township board by extension. And although Brian Freel, who's doing an excellent job as communications administrator, he is a deputy clerk, but when he works communications, he's actually a direct report to the township manager and works on behalf of the entire, um, township. Uh, we made this decision years ago because we thought it was important that something like communications, um, is not limited under the oversight of one elected official um, over, over anybody else. Um, the second thing I want to address tonight is that there is a new clerk's department email. Um, one of the things we learned through, um, this last election process and the fact that so many people were now voting, um, via mail and the state, um, actually sent out, um, paperwork to residents. They included our, um, deputy clerk's email address, brianf@grossell.com because again, Brian is full-time deputy clerk and we wanted to make sure any vital communications went straight to the full-time staff, but that tended to confuse some people because my name wasn't on it. A reminder that the elected clerk is part-time and we didn't want any risk that communications would come to me and I would miss them because I was occupied someplace else. So, um, we have a new email. It is gi clerk@grossell.com. It will be monitored by deputy clerk Freel, um, election coordinator Elena Farmer and myself. And any, any official communications to the clerk's office, um, will go through that. Um, and I think that's going to make sure that whatever your issue is, it will get addressed by one or all three of us. Um, obviously we still have Uta O'Connor at grossell dot, um, grossell township. And if you have an issue to address to me there, um, that's what that's there for. But we wanted to make sure that the official clerk's office email was something that all three employees could access. Then, um, another issue we wanted to address is that we do have an Instagram page for the clerk site. Um, the gross seal township is on Instagram and I think it's been wonderful, um, a resource to be able to transmit information about our upcoming Zoom meetings for the township board, for the township's commissions. Um, it was a vehicle for us to distribute, um, via the supervisor's office, the Wayne County updates on, on the COVID pandemic and the number of active cases and fatalities. And so the clerk's office also has an Instagram and we will be using it mostly to give information about the election, election processes, et cetera. And that is at Gross Eel Clerk. And so we invite people to come look for us there on Instagram. Then let's see, number four, um, Wayne County, um, printing office, Bruce Hatt today contacted our office. our office and let us know that Wayne County, the state has released Wayne County's ballots to be printed and that we will be receiving our ballots sometime this week, later this week. Our staff is getting ready to prepare and mail over 4,000 already requested absent voter ballots and you can expect to receive those by the end of September. I would like to add, Brian, unless I'm mistaken, that's almost half of our entire registered voter list is asking for mail-in ballots. What we would like you to do to return those ballots is, if you've noticed, outside Township Hall is a big gray, what looks like a mailbox. It is our drop box and we encourage residents who are voting absent voter ballots to drop their ballots in there as soon as they're done voting. That box gets emptied multiple times per day. It's secure and it guarantees that your absent voter ballot will be received before November 3rd at 8:00 PM. If you're voting by mail from out of town and you have to mail your ballot back to us and you've all heard the issues with what's going on with the postal service and the delays, we encourage you to vote and send your ballot back to us as soon as you possibly can. And, and that goes double for the move voters, anyone voting from overseas. Get that ballot back to us as soon as you receive it so that you're not worried about mail-in delays and that ballot not arriving in time. Then Brian wanted us to update you. We are finally getting to the point where all the old minutes and agendas are being ready to be posted to the new portal and he hopes to have that accomplished by the end of the week. The hold-up there was that our previous vendor released all our old records to us numbered, but not named or titled, which meant that staff had to open every file, determine what it was, when it was, and name it, file it, and get it ready for posting. But we hope that we will have that up sorted by commission and year by the end of the week. I feel a little bit like a news reporter here on SNL or something. So on Saturday this past weekend, we had dumped the junk. Unfortunately, there was no treasure hunt affiliated with it, but it was perfect weather for such an event and there are a number of people I would like to recognize and thank. First of all, Dan Jaster did a fabulous job of organizing this team of individuals who came and volunteered and they included Peter Kance, Trustee Carl Bletcher, DPS staff Donna Deppa, John Keim, Jeff Patterson. We had some volunteers from the Commission, Teresa and her husband John Weeks, Mary Ann Holmes, Shauna Gwanda, Gwanda, and then my husband Tim and I rounded out the team. Pizza was donated by Hungry Howies, Water &amp; Pop was donated by Kroger, the bees came all by themselves and we probably handled, well, the official number was 414 vehicles and we know we had some repeat customers, people who just couldn't bring us enough junk. We filled up all the containers and it was just really great to see so many people from our community, seniors, kids, you know, school kids. We got all kinds of stuff from landscaping to old carpet, concrete to scrap metal. I can tell you, Kim, I don't think golf is doing so well. Quite a few clubs, golf clubs were donated to the scrap metal bin this weekend and, you know, I tried to palm them off on you and you said you had plenty at the clubs. So, you know, maybe that's setting a trend. But we hope that by next year, we have this pandemic behind us and that we will be able to offer the treasure hunt again where people can then bring some things that other people might find and take home themselves. And my final item is not an easy one to talk about. I'm going to beg your indulgence because it's rather lengthy. So this started before the election. Around about June 25th, we had a resident contact the Clerk's Office and with the intent of registering a voter challenge to a island voter and also candidate on the, on the ballot. This is something that's never happened in all my years, but election law does allow for a elector in a township to challenge another elector and residency that they do or do not have a right to vote in the jurisdiction. So we took this information and we talked to our Township Attorney, Supervisor Loftus, Township Manager Dale Rehm, Deputy Clerk Brian Freel, and Attorney Thomas Sorti and I all put our heads together to, you know, understand what do we have to do. I'd like to tell you, we did follow the procedures outlined by state election law. We did an investigation. We asked Township Attorney for advice and he gave us a memo on June 29th outlining the process we had to follow and also informing us that at this time, even though the, the candidate and voter in question seemed to own the property, he did not have a certificate of occupancy to reside in the property. And so that brought up the issue of residency and the state election law requires that a candidate reside in a residence in the community for a set amount of days before, prior to the election. So we were getting prepared to investigate this and on July 7th, the Township Grosseal Election Commission met, as we do before every election. Our meetings are noticed in all the sources of record and generally nobody attends these meetings except the officers, which happen to be the Supervisor, Clerk, and Treasurer and, and the deputy often attends. We were surprised at this meeting by a resident who came to pursue the challenge of this candidate voter at the Election Commission meeting. We have a provision for public comment and so the resident was allowed to speak. After that, we contacted the State Bureau of Elections. We also discussed further with our attorney and we found out that the resident, in order to make this challenge officially, would have to provide a notarized affidavit, which then the resident did. Once that was received by the Clerk's Office, our job was to notify the, the challenge candidate voter of the challenge and this candidate voter was given 30 days to respond. Clearly, this took it beyond the election. That is just the reality of the way things, you know, worked in the timeline. And so the challenged voter candidate finally replied and gave us a response by August 13th, which we then also passed on to the Township Attorney. What we found is that while the documentation, and there was quite a bit of documentation provided, it, it did prove that the challenged voter and candidate owned the property in question, but there was still a question of residency since he still did not have a certificate to occupy the property. And so I made a finding that while the documentation supported the ownership of the property, it did not prove residency. And we sent an official letter by certified mail on August 28th and we heard back from the post office that the letter was picked up on September 1st, 2020. And that's basically where it stands right now. I see that Attorney Assorti is in on this meeting and Deputy Freel. Tom, would you like to make a statement to add to what I just said?
No, I think you covered it well. We made sure that all the procedures were properly followed.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, and that's pretty much the Clerk's Report. Brian Freel, do you have anything to add?
I do not. I just want to add, I know we noticed that Derek was cutting in and out during his, we're having some trouble with Wi-Fi at Township Hall, so if you can't hear me at any time, just, that's the problem right now. We seem to be going in and out, so I just want to let you know.
Okay. And I noticed Elena is in on this meeting as well. Elena, if you're still there, do you have anything to add? Okay. Well, we're getting ready, ramping up for a big election. If you are community-minded and fearless, we are still looking for poll inspectors to work in the precincts. We are looking for poll inspectors to work at the absent ballot counting board, which we housed in the empty hangar one off the, the, not the hangar one, we housed in the east wing of, of the hangar and it worked out very well. We were able to maintain physical distance for people. We had good ventilation in the facility, lots of, you know, the lighting was very good. So I think that we're feeling guardedly, you know, confident moving into November, but we'll give you more updates in October. And again, once you receive your ballots, get those puppies back to us as soon as you can so you're not worried about meeting the deadline. And that's the Clerk's Report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Treasurer?
Yeah, thanks, Brian. For the month of July, Township had a total of $18,953,866 invested in various accounts. They generated about $3,361, which is 0.16%. The detailed information is on my website at grosseal.com. The Treasurer's Office has been busy collecting summer taxes for mortgage companies and individuals that are due today, which is the 14th of September, 2020. Payments will be taken at the Township without late penalty until 5:00 PM today. Mail postmarked by September 14th, 2020 will also be accepted as timely, so. And beginning on September 15th of 2020, a 1% penalty will be added to your monthly to your outstanding balance. Beginning on March 1st, 2021, the delinquent property tax must be paid at the Wayne County Treasurer's Office, but until that time, they can be paid here. Today, we have collected about 75% of the summer 2020 tax rolls distribution to the schools and the counties have been made in a timely fashion and that's all I have, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Folks, you've got, what, about three hours to get them postmarked if you didn't make it by five today, so plenty of time. All right, let's move on to Trustees' Report. Looks like Trustee Jim Buddy, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. We've, we've, we've heard a lot tonight, so I'll be brief. No DPS meeting this month and no ZBA meeting. And everybody just stay safe and enjoy the rest of the good weather. That's it.
I was brief. Thank you, sir. Mr. Blatcher? There's that trust, there's that mute, there's that mute switch again.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I have four reports to make tonight. The first is from the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission. We have ongoing trail maintenance. You've seen some cracked ceiling and surface coating that we've been doing along Meridian Road as well as all of horse mill from Meridian to Park Lane. The trail is closed during that time. Follow the signs, watch on Grosseal Connect. We also have had a meeting with Wayne County officials and BPAC with the Ralph Wilson Fund and regarding a connector, bicycle pedestrian connector from Meridian Road to Trenton. And right now, there's various possibilities using Bellevue and there is some money apparently that is going to be available from DTE going from Jefferson to the Wayne County Free Bridge. The Ralph Wilson Funds are being used to study engineering, what's possible, what's feasible, and BPAC is following up on that rather energetically. The Ralph Wilson Fund is very, very interested in extending bicycle trails, particularly to the Iron Bell Trail, as you know, which goes from, originally from Belle Isle to Iron Mountain. It certainly is in segments, goes as far south as Rockwood and Gibraltar, connecting up to Belle Isle and there's several segments. It's a really neat trail. If you look that up on the internet, you'll see that the connections are well over 600 miles long. So you could literally ride a bike or walk from Rockwood, Gibraltar, all the way up to the UP into Iron Mountain and beyond, almost all the way over across the Upper Peninsula. Second thing is, is that I am on the Greenways Open Space Commission. As Uta indicated, we did dump the junk this last Saturday from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Dan Jaster did just a great job. I hate to single out anybody, but Dan just really did a tremendous program. It was the second time. He managed to find a lot of people that would donate their time. I think there were over a dozen people that were there. I know that we had tons and tons of stuff taken off. If you look at, there's about 4,400, 4,500 residents on, residences on Grosseal and that would mean we had almost 10% of the island population by residents coming there and dropping off everything from tires to iron and all kinds of, of junk. But Dan just did a really, really good job. And again, thanks to Krogers and Hungry Howies for donating pop, water, and pizza. It was a long day, but it was very worth it. Second part of Greenways Open Space is that we have heard back from the Township's engineer. So I always indicated that he is putting together the plans and expect to have those over to us where we can do drainage improvements and engineering on both the new trail between Gage and Ferry Road, as well as the trail across from Meridian Elementary. That's pretty interesting because we want to turn those into year-round trails and be able to upgrade those so that everybody can use them. I have also walked the Meridian Woods Trail with Boy Scouts. We had a Boy Scout that was originally considering doing that for an Eagle Scout project. The council unfortunately turned down his project, but I was contacted by Scoutmaster and a scout and they want to connect with our DPS and see if we can't start pulling junk out of there. There's a significant amount of junk on the east side of that property. An old boat, a marine inboard engine, a number of tires, concrete, just debris, as well as on the north side where we have part of a, it looks like a truck bed that is buried and partially buried and we want to remove that, as well as some boards that were used for a treehouse, those kinds of things. We expect to start work on that project in September and pretty exciting to have all of that stuff removed from there and have everything cleaned up. It'll look a lot better and it certainly is environmentally friendly. The third report I have is with the Grosseal Police Department and I want to indicate first of all that our officers and dispatchers, Animal Control Officer, and everybody is doing very well. Morale is high. We do have people that have been very, very healthy. We'd like to keep them that way. There are no reports right now of any infection from COVID-19, which is rather remarkable given the fact that police and fire are responding virtually every day to an emergency that involves close human contact. We had 15,800 miles driven last month, 88 calls for animals, we had 19 alarms, 58 calls for rescues, 1,046 calls overall, and I am very pleased to report, for the first time in a long time, we did not have four, we did not have three, we did not have two, we did not have a single OWI for the month. So drunk driving for the month was just not there that we were able to, to connect on. Additionally, officers did 124 verbal warnings and the shelter has had 73 calls and donations year-to-date are almost $23,000. So the next meeting we have is going to include a presentation. We have a canine that is assigned to special duty and the dog, unfortunately, jury is coming up on 10 years, almost 11 years, and that's going to mark the end of his career. and that's going to mark the end of his career. So what we're looking at is retiring Jury, who has done a great job, and replacing him with a canine that will be able to produce results as well as revenue for us. And I'm going to ask Chief Warnock and Deputy Chief Harden and Lieutenant Pellon to make a presentation at the next board meeting to justify the expense, time, and commitment for having a dog added as part of our department, essentially replacing a dog that's going into senior status and has done a great job. Fourth part of my report is going to be an update with the COVID. It is part of public safety, and I think therefore is relevant for us to make the public aware, and certainly the board aware. COVID-19 was, testing was provided by the Grozeal Health Organization. Again, we had two weekends, July and August, where we tested a total of eleven hundred people. And then the schools were contacted, and we tested over four hundred staff, students, and parents the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday before Labor Day. That was done with a tremendous amount of cooperation from the school superintendent, and most particularly, Linda Driska, who is the school manager. Linda was just incredible to work with, very, very busy. She was going through the audit that they do on an annual basis, and then she was also putting time into organizing the COVID testing again. That is the thirteenth day that we have had COVID testing, and we had over four hundred staff, students, and parents that came in. It was a very successful, would like to have had more, and hoping that we don't need to do it again. But that was excellent. And again, when I look at what Brian Frill puts out on the daily report regarding COVID in Wayne County, I'm noticing now that we're up to a hundred and twenty-three confirmed cases. The positivity rate is well below the national average, and it is well below what the CDC tells us that they would like to see. What that means is everybody's doing their job out there. They're wearing the masks. They are social distancing. It's not a hundred percent, but it's certainly showing great results for Grozeal. And on behalf of the Grozeal Health Organization, and most particularly Dr. Holly Janeski has been involved, I just want to say thank you to everybody out there that is cooperating and making this thing possible. The results are just better than what we see in so many other communities, and just want to thank Grozeal Health Organization for making all this possible. And that concludes my report.
Hey, thank you, Trustee Blatchere. We'll move on to Mr. Malvesto.
I really don't have anything to offer tonight. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Tom. Mr. Nelson. Jim still with us?
Got me?
Ah, there you are.
I'm here.
Okay.
Ralph Wilson, the former owner of the Buffalo Bills Football Team NFL. He's deceased now, but he is giving back big time to things like, the things that Carl talked about. So Ralph Wilson, native Detroit, and a great guy, is giving back every chance he gets. I don't have anything else, other than I'll have Kim give the Director's Report. And Kim, you're on.
Good evening. We've got a lot, I have a lot to talk about tonight. I first just want to say that the, I had a couple residents ask if the pool was still open. We did close Labor Day, and I was planning to stay open, but when I looked at the weather forecast, it was pretty bad last week, and it's obviously cold right now. So I feel that the CRC and myself made a good decision financially to close on Labor Day. We had a great season, even though we were two weeks delayed with COVID. We were one of the only pools that did open down river. Just numerous thanks from the community for all the work we did out there. Thanks to the lifeguards, and we made it through a safe season, no rescues and no COVID out of the pool. So the golf course is still open, and we are down to twenty carts. We're reducing our fleet just due to it's getting colder. Not many people are golfing. Our leagues are coming to an end. And I just want to remind all residents that the last cart goes out at six p.m. So if you're trying to make a tee time, just make note of that, that the last cart goes out at six. I will continue the senior shopping for our residents every Thursday morning. Any senior that still needs groceries, a lot of our seniors are still homebound. They are not ready to hit the grocery stores, even though we are transporting a few right now. That is Thursday mornings, if you need groceries delivered. I do the shopping for the seniors every Thursday. Call seven-three-four-two-one-six-four-nine-oh-five, and that is the senior transportation and senior communication line for any senior on the island. We are starting, and we have started senior transportation. And again, we have installed the Plexiglas in the transport van. So any senior that needs to get to the grocery, the hair salon, doctor's appointments, obviously precede anything, I will pick you up and I will get you to where you need to go. And some of the seniors are starting to come out and get out with their masks and taking all those precautions. We are only allowing two seniors per day, due to the fact we have to sanitize the van after each use. So we do have different protocols with that. The way that I would like the seniors to call, we can't do it like we did before, where they would call and say, hey, can you pick me up? You know, things have changed in the COVID world. So advance notice is definitely appreciated. So just keep that in mind. Couple of good things coming with recreation. I know the pool is closed, but we are having one last event out of the swimming pool, and everyone's wondering, what are we doing now? The heaters are turned off, so the water's very cold, but we are having a cardboard boat race on Monday, September twenty-fourth at the swimming pool from four to five-thirty. This is an event I actually did back in Ohio, and the CRC was talking about it on Thursday night, and I said, what the heck? We'll do it this year. So go to the Facebook page. All the information is there, the rules and regulations for the boat race, and that is on Monday, September twenty-fourth, from four to five-thirty at the swimming pool. Also, our junior running club, which is a traditional rec program, starts tomorrow at Meridian. And we've also assisted with the schools on the sixth grade running club. So the rec department is overseeing the sixth graders, and that also begins tomorrow. Unfortunately, those programs are full. Again, we have strict COVID rules and working with the schools on the sixth grade club with physicals, social distancing, are we wearing masks or are we not? Those things change daily in the rec world, and as of today, they don't have to wear masks if they are running outside. Only, and again, we are going to maintain social distancing through those programs. I've been flooded with, the safety of these programs, we're outside. All the volunteers and coaches are going to maintain social distancing while they are running and staying fit and active. So that's a positive thing in the rec world. We are going to do another tradition, which is our Fall Festival out at Centennial Farm. That is October third, from one to four. Hay rides, pumpkin patches, and again, this event is outside. We will be monitoring social distancing and requiring masks for all of these events, even though they're outside. A lot of people have the misconception, I'm outside, I don't need a mask. But what I've noticed through all our residents, because I see them every day, golf course, swimming pool, concerts, everyone's pretty responsible. They are wearing masks, and that is, that's a good thing. So again, anything that's run through the rec department, wear the mask, social distance, do the right thing. And we can have these events, and we can do them very safe for the community. I also want to acknowledge the DDA, Trish Eblin, welcome aboard. Trish Eblin, Chad Novak, Jenna Jones, and Molly Reno are the Paint the Town Red Team, and that is going to happen October tenth. That's an all-day event for the community. I know there's been some social media, why are we doing this? You have to understand that recreation is a big part of this island. And our job, and our sole job, is to provide programming for the island for all ages, to provide safe events for the community to be involved in. Right now, during COVID, it's definitely a challenge, but we are finding the safe way to do it. A lot of our residents have been homebound for five to six months, and they do need to get out for the mental health of this community, and that is our job as the Recreation Department and the CRC, and that's what we are doing this fall. Again, Paint the Town Red is October tenth. Follow the Paint the Town Red Facebook page, and Chad and the team is putting together all those events. There'll be a schedule of events, just like we've done in the past. And again, residents, if you feel comfortable coming out, social distancing and masks are the way to go when you have an event. So just follow that Facebook page. I know we took some heat over the summer when the politicking was happening over the marina. I do want to inform the Township Board, current Township Board and the new board coming on board, that Hurst Marina is now down at Pier Three. They have begun work, and Bridget Hurst was able to attend the CRC meeting a week and a half ago to give an update to the community. Not sure if the board was involved in that, but Pier Three should be completed by the end of the week, and then she will be moving over to Pier Two, and then Pier Five. And those peers will be completed pending the water levels and those types of things that we have to deal with. We can't control water levels, but she is, her and her team are working diligently on Pier Three. So I did want to give that update. Also, winter storage, we are getting a lot of calls for that, and that is now available. Just call the Recreation Office. We have a lot of storage available. We are very, very inexpensive compared to the other marinas in the nearby vicinity, if you need to store your boat. And actually, we're taking storage, not only for boats, but we are taking storage for smaller RVs and any trailers that you would not like to keep on your property. We will be able to host that for you in the marina area as well. The next CRC meeting is September twenty-fourth at six p.m. That will be Zoom, and this is going to be an important meeting for the CRC. Brian Borden, he's going to be attending that meeting and briefing the Recreation Commission and the community how the five-year plan, and how that process is going to begin, because we are due to expire in December, and we did get an extension on that due to COVID. So that's a very, very important piece to the community. Community involvement is number one for the CRC. We want to hear what you want. We want to hear your needs. Obviously, it's a different world right now, obviously with the tennis center. Those indoor facilities are definitely a challenge right now, but I feel that, you know, COVID, and I pray COVID will hopefully leave us soon, so we can begin some indoor activities. So any community resident that would be, like to be involved in the five-year plan, please attend that Zoom, and we'd love to hear from you what you'd like to see from the CRC. We are transparent. We are an open book, and we are here for you. The last thing I want to say tonight, I just want to say congratulations to the Grozeal Golf Team. They did play today in the Huron League Jamboree, and they got first place by thirty-one strokes. Obviously, I have a team member, my daughter's on that team. I've gotten to know the girls, and Coach Butler have done a great job. So I just wanted to congratulate them today. And also to all the sports teams. I know it's been hard for the schools. I've been in communication with A.D., Jim Okler, and, you know, all the things that the schools are going through with the kids going back. We are in communication almost every day with policies, procedures, those types of things. I want to thank the teachers, as I have a daughter in the school system, for everything that they're doing to keep the kids safe. And from what I hear, everything is working out great with the programs the schools have set up. And I want to thank Jim Okler for doing what he has been doing and what he's doing now for all the kids in the sports. Football coming back, that is a huge, huge part of this community, is our school district. So I just want to say thanks to them, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Covered pretty much everything going on in the island.
Talking fast.
The cardboard boat race, twenty-first of September?
That is, yeah, it is. And you can register online for that. Got to build a boat out of cardboard and duct tape, and you got to get in the boat. Fastest one down the swimming pool wins a big old prize. So it's kind of a fun thing.
What could go wrong?
I've seen a lot happen in that.
Uta, did you have a comment? Unmute.
Sure, I'm unmuted. Kim, you were laughing, because Mr. Hadamaker at the middle school a number of years ago did this with his kids on the Detroit River at the
That's next year.
And it was hilarious, but, you know, a lot of safety concerns as well. So to know they're doing it in the pool is, you know, actually much better.
That's our practice for next year. We're going to plant something in the river. And again, there's a lot of rules to this. I really need the parents to go on the Facebook page and flotation devices and all that, but it's going to be a fun thing. So I'm hoping. Yep.
Good fun. Okay, thank you, Kim. Thank you, Uta. Okay, moving on. Township Attorney, any information for us, Mr. Sardi?
Well, Mr. Supervisor, I think you know, and many of the board members know, that I've been trying to work with the Township to keep them up to date on the various executive orders we are receiving from the Governor's Office. If anybody has any questions about Zoom meetings, the answer is, is that the Governor still restricts, the Governor's orders still restrict in-person meetings to ten individuals. That virtually makes it impossible for a Township Board to meet and allow anybody to appear. It continues to encourage these types of meetings, and in fact, the Michigan Township Association has taken the position that these are by far the best scenario for what's happening right now. As soon as we know something different, I'll get it out to everyone. I know there's others at the Township watching. We'll do the best we can to get back in person as soon as we can. With that, thanks, Kim, and anything anyone can do out there to support the high school sports teams, it's going to be tough for all of them. And so watch for various events for the various teams and see if you can help them out with support.
Tom? Oh, you're getting too quick. I guess you're done.
That's all I have. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sardi. Township Manager, Mr. Am.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I have a question. Does anyone remember the Eel Camera?
Yes.
The Eel Camera is the local newspaper. That was our official publication of record. Because that is closed, the News Herald is where we have deferred to. So the other publications, The Grand, the Grozeal Trib, great publications, but their publication schedule doesn't allow us at this time to use them for one of our official publications. So I just wanted to remind people that, because they've been asked about all those other publications. But I also want to remind people, our official publication, besides that newspaper, our meetings, our letterhead, our website, Grozeal Connect, GitV, as well as the variety of apps such as Facebook, Twitter, and now Instagram. Okay? So we have plenty of platforms out there. We do a lot to get our word out. Lengthy messages, big information, we usually put that on the website, and then we send a link or a message to, through the pushes. So the information is there, but I want to let people know that from a newspaper standpoint, we still have the News Herald, folks, and the law doesn't allow us to use strictly electronic yet. Maybe we're learning from it. Maybe that's something that'll come to us soon, but we're hopeful. The other thing is, the Observation Deck on the East River McComb was done today, but the contractor didn't like a couple of the corners, so we pulled them back out. That project last fall, they didn't beat the weather, they didn't get the painting done. Then they ended up having the COVID delay, and actually, some of the crew members ended up becoming ill a while back, so pushed the delay back further. So I'm comfortable to say that that should be completely wrapped up, except for the final inspection probably sometime this week. So we're happy about that. I want everyone to know that the Art Alliance Group is interested in participating with the beautification committee and working on the northeast four corners. Everyone needs to know and remember that all those beautification projects are done by volunteers. Our staff doesn't do it. And of course, in any group full of volunteers, sometimes their success is greater than others. That corner, for instance, has gotten a little weedy this year. It's just been a bad year to keep up on it. So they're showing interest, and I think that would be a Um, so, um, they're showing interest and I, and I think that would be a, a, a great partnership. And, uh, was mentioned earlier about sports, uh, Mr. Freel's working with, uh, um, high school to get GITV, um, shown, um, streamed for high school football. Um, obviously they're limiting it, stands to no, to no, uh, no fans, is that correct, Brian?
Uh, yeah, they're allowing, um, only two, um, fans per player or coach along with, and then no students at all, so.
So Ryan's working on getting that streamed for the community. Um, and again, that's just, uh, a, a crazy COVID thing. Um, but last, just a personal note, I want to thank everyone for the care and concern. Um, it's been a crazy, uh, couple of weeks due to the, uh, passing of, of a relative. Um, but thank you very much to everyone who's, who's been there and helped support. So I appreciate all that. And that's it, Mr. Supervisor.
Hey, thanks Dale. All right, so it's, I'll try to wrap, at least wrap up, uh, from my world. And this is going to be all over the page, a lot of, obviously has happened since our last meeting in July. Uh, but a lot of it has already been covered by our trustees or fellow board members. We'll start with the good stuff, I'll pick up on where, uh, Kim left off with our DDA, Students Paint the Town Red on the 10th, that is an holiday event. And we're going to try to have Hooray for Halloween, including the parade on the 24th, unless we get guidance from the governor that says we can't have parades. So we'll call it a protest and then we can have it. Um, bad joke, I know. But, uh, that's planned, Hooray for Halloween, again, this is for kids. And we'll count on the parents to keep the kids appropriately separated. Hopefully, they may wear masks anyway, uh, what's one more little mask to wear? So anyway, 10 to 1 on the 24th, hopefully that one is scheduled and hopefully we'll have good weather. Um, let's see, uh, Kim also mentioned the five-year plan, please get your inputs to her. They will hold public hearings somehow so that you can get your inputs for what you want to see for recreation in this community. Uh, because once that plan gets printed, that's the plan that the CRC and the director tend to, uh, work towards. So please get your inputs in, chill, let us know when they're going to hold the hearings, right, Kim? For the five-year plan? She's nodding yes, you don't have to unmute. Um, I want to thank, I mentioned televising, trying to televise football. Uh, that's a project initiated by Mitch Lewis. Um, a senior wants to get into the Naval Academy, I'm going to do what I can to help him with that. Uh, he's also the one on his own initiative, uh, put the trail in through open space across from Meridian. Uh, just to, he typifies what I like to see in, in the officers I hired, you know, initiative, um, discipline, social skills, group, uh, group disciplines. He's going to do a fine job. Anyway, he's working with Brian Freel to get the, the streamed and they're going back and forth with how strong is the signal? Can we get a booster, can we do it on YouTube? But they're going to do their best to get it out, he's working with the right people. Um, the COVID testing, we test a lot of residents. We have 123 positive cases. What I can't get, the information I can't seem to get is how many are, have symptoms? Mild symptoms, moderate symptoms, hospitalization. We've had the four deaths, haven't had one of those since, gosh, I think it was March. And those were not good phone calls to get, but haven't had one. So, you know, what is, what is the level of severity of the 123, which is not a very high number of all the, thousands that we've tested on the island? So whatever you're doing, folks, you're doing it pretty much right. But I'm not hearing about hospitalizations. And I think only, uh, uh, Michigan Department of Health, Human Services, Emergency Management, Region Two South, it's a long name, uh, she had those numbers a while back, but I haven't heard from her in a while. I'll try to get those, because that's important to know. What is the severity of these positive cases? Um, I did mention, and this is, this is going to be a little more involved, uh, the uncertainty, I think we're at 183 executive orders now. The case, there's a case in the, in the Supreme Court, went to the court on the 9th, uh, challenging the governor's authority under the 1945 statute. Many of the police forces, she's listed many of these as misdemeanors, but a lot of the police forces are not, don't have the money to enforce it, don't think they have the, have not, uh, uh, adopted these by reference. So they don't have the local authority. And the whole thing may get vacated by a Supreme Court decision, it's just a mess. And that's why in my recent article in the Grand, I was, I just expressed my disappointment with the governor, the legislature and the courts. We're not getting these authorities back where they belong. We have a state constitution that assigns different authorities to the three different branches. They did not ever intend for it all to be in the hands of the governor inevitably. And those who are touting what a great job she's doing, I, I can't say it's a bad job or a good job. I don't have any basis of comparison, but I wonder if they'd be saying the same thing if it was Governor Snyder making those decisions. It seems to follow partisan lines, uh, to the detriment of good government. So back to my, uh, article, in case anyone misunderstood my, the intent of the article about encouraging people to vote at the polls. Because if you vote at the polls and you make an error on your ballot, which is kind of organic to the, the partisan primary, but still, if you make an error on your ballot at the polls, the tabulator will reject it. You'll get a chance to get a corrected ballot in. Uh, Brian, I think you said we had some, almost 600 spoiled ballots on the partisan?
I actually have no idea, the, the way our system's set up, they do not tabulate that number. So I can't, I can't tell you at all.
Okay, but there was a significant number.
Yes.
Brian's nodding yes. Again, it wasn't because, uh, I changed the outcome, just that a lot of ballots were rejected. Remember in, uh, in 2000, George W. Bush won the presidency, I think it was 279 votes was the final tally in Florida. So it's important that your vote counts. And I also want to encourage, if you do choose to absentee, drop, drop it off at the clerk's office or in the mail, the new box we provided for you. You know it's going to get in, it's going to be counted properly if you do that. If you send it in through the mail, when I, I just saw the, the video of the postal worker dumping trays and trays of mail into a dumpster, does not bode well for mail-in voting because it's going to be a crush on the system. And unfortunately that happens. Also the vote harvesting that some states allow. Uh, so drop them off, if at all possible, drop your ballot off at the clerk's office or vote at the polls and know that your ballot goes through. Um, one more, and I'm just going to, I'm not going to rant, I'm just going to express my disappointment with the social media post regarding the possible land sale near Centennial Farm. Please, folks, please put no credence in anonymous Facebook posts where they come up, they conjure up some just bizarre scenarios. This one was, this one was the winner. It was just, first of all, it was a secret deal. Well, we notified the adjacent property owners. We, you know, when, when, when this was brought up, why did we notify the adjacent property owners? Because we could not sell this parcel to anyone but an adjacent property owner. We can't orphan a parcel. You would have to have access to it through an adjacent property. So that's why we had notified the, the adjacent property owners, none of them made an offer on it. The real bizarre one was that the house on Third Street was demolished to make way for an access road to the lots where the mansions were going to be built. I think that was exact terminology. The dangerous building, we, uh, let's see, we held the hearing, the dangerous buildings hearing in October, October of 2019. Okay, not just in time for the sale, October of 2019. The building was demolished in March of 2020. He had the opportunity, the owner had the option to bring it up to code or demolish it. He demolished it on March 20th before COVID. And the, 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 the newer was going to develop mansions on the 3.4 acres, acres. Our zoning prohibits flag-type developments where one access road in leads to several lots, it's just not permitted. There's going to have the property logged to pay for the parcel. Folks, we got more deadfall, more trees in this island with what to do with. We pay people to remove trees, they don't pay us. And the last one, and I, I know we've discussed this before, let the people vote on it. This is not an item we can put on a refer, on a referendum. But the only thing we can do is millage it, everything else goes to the Board of Trustees. That's what you elected us to do. And actually, we're only allowed for three elections. We're allowed three elections annually, what? That's what you have a Board of Trustees for. Anyway, the sale was never seriously considered. It never got past, you know, the, the discussion phase, the research phase and the, and the potential, uh, uh, buyer was offered. So it's off the table, but please, that, it was, it was so bizarre. If so many people that I thought would do better, took it seriously, I wouldn't give it any thought. But again, an anonymous Facebook post full of absolute inaccurate information, please, please. If you have a question, call me, I answered several calls on this. Want to explain the situation and why we initially contacted only the adjacent owners. They understood, we cannot orphan a parcel. We would have to assign this to an, an adjacent parcel because we have to be able to provide access. Um, but along those same lines, uh, the, we're going to be facing revenue shortfalls. And it looks like right now could lose as much as 80,000 or more from state revenue sharing. So the new board on their March, uh, budget going to have some decisions to make, how they're going to fill the budget. And, and honestly, the township does own hundreds of properties that would not qualify as open space, I mean hundreds, that are laying fallow and, uh, generating no revenue, but they, but they have to be maintained. So the new board may consider selling those if necessary to generate revenue and get more property back on the tax rolls, generating revenue and offsetting the cost of, of maintenance. Um, anyway, my, my, the point I was trying to make is, please, anonymous Facebook posts, give me a call, give one of your trustees a call. That's what we're there for, we'll have, we will have the answer for you, we'll get the right answers for you.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
There was a lot of background noise. Could you repeat what you said about the, uh, proposed offer? There was a lot of background noise, I don't know if that came across clearly.
Well, which, which part of the offer that?
That it was withdrawn.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, the offer, the offer was withdrawn. So it's, it's not, again, we, we, we didn't get too far into it. Um, and the offer has been withdrawn, so it's not going to be sold, at least it's not going to be sold now. Um, I had a request for guarantee that this board or future board would not sell this or, I don't know if you've been all properties, but I can't say what this, a majority of this board would move to do, nor what the future board will do. I don't think, I don't think it would.
Think we have another freeze out?
Yeah, it looks like Supervisor Loftus is frozen up.
Okay, my spinning wheel has stopped and I'm back live. That concludes my report. Um, please trust the Board of Trustees you've elected and the one you have elected to come in. Include, unless you have any questions for me, that concludes my report. With that, um, public comment. Three minutes and anything you want to talk about. And I'll turn it over to Brian Freel to allow, uh, public commentary.
Okay, let's start with, uh, Mary Bresnahan. Make sure you unmute yourself.
Get Mary unmute yourself.
Yep, you got to unmute yourself.
Well.
Hi, all right. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can now, thank you.
Okay, I know it was not on your agenda tonight, but it's been on the agenda for all our Bellevue neighbors for literally the last month. Um, we have some major concerns because I've lived in this house, we've lived in our house for 30 years. I have neighbors, none of us are, were aware of the sale of the property. Um, we were also told by the Grow Seal Civic Association that you guys literally bought the property back in 1996 to, as a buffer between the farm and, you know, to conserve the nature of the whole area. The Centennial Farm is a landmark to Grow Seal. I mean, that is 100, you know, 100 Centennial Farm. I mean, that farm should have some meaning to Grow Seal. People visit it, we, you know, us neighbors, most of us love the woods behind us, we hear the nature. We, we have all this and we were shocked by a letter that was received by us on a Saturday, dated the day after election, which was kind of a, you know. And, uh, so we were pretty disturbed and we've been, we've had meetings, we've had all this going on in our neighborhood. And I think it's ridiculous that, um, this has even happened. And I, I don't understand, I mean, it's like you guys bought this property, so why? Somebody comes along, wants to buy it and they say they want to conserve the property. But if they want to conserve the property, that doesn't even make sense. It's already conserved, apparently. So what's their intentions? And we don't even know how much this person is wanting to buy the property for. And none of us were offered the intentions to buy the property, there were no for-sale signs on the property. None of us were aware of this. So I, you know, I don't understand, it's really caused a major problem. And it shouldn't even be a Bellevue issue, this should be a whole Grow Seal issue.
Oh, it's off the table, so.
And naturally.
Yeah, that's a good answer, that's a good answer.
Hey, go on somewhere.
Okay, well, you know what, many of us are willing to get lawyers about this too, so. And you got the Grow Seal Civic Association looking into this too, so. And I hope many people are listening to this meeting tonight because the Grow Seal community, everybody I've even spoke to, even Mike Stevenson, who writes for the newspaper, didn't even know about this. So many people on Grow Seal don't even know about this. You guys, it's ridiculous.
Ms. Bresnahan? I would just like to say, we, we did not set out to do this. An offer was made. The majority of the board said, um, if, if this is serious, let's notify the neighbors. And that is as far as the township.
Definitely.
Can I finish, please? That is as far as the township board ever got. And we, we haven't even met about it since. So I'm afraid to say that what, the, the, the situation you're talking about, um, absolutely escalated out of control without any board participation at all. Um, we never had a second meeting about this property. So this is, and, and I'm not even sure the majority of the board would have voted to sell the property.
Why did we get a letter then? Why did we get a letter by one of your partners, Dale Ream, telling us that we had 14 people give our opinion about it?
It's called due process.
Okay, then you guys should have known that.
Then why didn't every other resident of Grow Seal?
Okay, who's, who's speaking now, who's speaking?
My husband and he's sitting right by me.
Okay. All right, well, Ms. Bresnahan.
Why didn't every resident of Grow Seal get a letter like we got?
I think I explained that, we're, we, if we were to sell it, it was out to the, if another resident wanted to make an offer, we weren't going to, the only one we'd, like you said, the only one we'd sell it to is an adjacent property owner. It didn't get any farther than that, but it was part of our due process to notify the adjacent property owners. Adjacent property owners got the letter, nobody else was invited. Those, a lot of those people called me and explained, it's, it would only be available to an adjacent property owner. When I explained that, it's okay, that's why we were not notified or given an opportunity to buy it. Only adjacent owners.
Well, I'm sure Dale Ream received our emails and he should know, he was going to forward it to those guy, you guys. So I'm, hopefully you read all of them because they were not good.
He compiled them, I have a, he has a binder full of them, I have a binder full of them. All right, thank, Mary, thank you. Ryan, who's up?
Okay, Deborah Love Day.
Hi, I've never done this before, so am I coming through?
You are loud and clear, Deborah, welcome.
Good, thank you. I'm, um, I'm on here with my husband and we're still concerned about the Airbnb that we've been notifying the township about since last October. The situation has not gotten any better. It is rented out five or six times usually per week, sometimes every day. Uh, the behavior over there is, is to the point that we can't use our yard. And I was surprised with all the, because I've sent several emails about every six or eight weeks or letters to keep the board, uh, notified as to what is happening over there. And like I said, we can't use our yard. We can't be, it's, it's just horrible. There has been nudity, there has been lewd acts in the backyard. And we were waiting to find out what is happening with the lawyers. It was not addressed today. Am I still there? I'm sorry.
You're still, yeah, yeah, you're still, we're still listening. Yeah, go ahead.
It's just horrible here. I mean, there is speeding, there is noise, there's disgusting behavior. Um, we, my, I, we stay in, my husband and I, because of the COVID. We both have medical concerns that we cannot have people in our house that could possibly have been exposed. So if someone comes to visit, we we can't even often visit in our own backyard. We've had to move from the backyard to the front porch and vice versa because of noise uh, and action over there. And sometimes it's just loud family fun, but it's next, it's like living next door to the recreation part of a hotel. And that's on a good day. So, you know, it's we've, we've been patient. It's been a long time. When is something going to happen?
I'm going to, and I I wish we could take some more of action we have. Mr. Assorti, can I ask your indulgence in what what we've done so far and how the courts have supported us?
Sure, we, there's been, there's been multiple citations written. Partly because of the COVID situation, the hearing dates on those are probably not happening as fast as what we'd be used to. We've compiled the necessary number of initial complaints, initial citations uh, that the matter will be moving forward to a higher level court with the county. That, of course, is is not the easiest process either right now with the COVID situation. But we we are well aware of the situation. We, the township is working on it on a daily basis. And if we're doing everything we can to get it in front of the court and to get it resolved.
Uh, Tom, just a quick, this has been going on far too long. I know that the courts are bogged and they don't seem to be, my opinion, don't seem to be taken as seriously as we are. Would an adjacent neighbor have standing in a civil suit against the property owner?
Absolutely.
Okay, any suggestion as to how we go about that?
You know what? If you want to, if you want to give me a call later on, I can go over that with you. I don't think that that's appropriate for me to give um, on a meeting like this.
Okay.
I'll I'll get with Dale and get your information and make sure I get in touch with you.
Thank you. I would greatly appreciate it.
And I'll be happy to give you exact detail on what we're doing with 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 enforcement process.
Thank you, because what you just told me is contradictory to what I was just told a few weeks ago. I was told that one ticket was uh, was issued last fall and that just before the courts were closed down that um, our neighbor who owns this, well, through an LLC, uh, went before the judge and got the large fine brought down to a hundred and thirty six dollars, which he paid, and that no other fines have been written. Um, because that was my suggestion, write fines, fine him over and over.
Well, I'll be happy to get you the complete detail, all the citations that have been issued and what action's been taken by the court, as well as what action we plan on going forward with. We also had a recent, we also had a recent uh, Court of Appeals decision that helps on these uh, these types of rentals in residential districts. Um, so the the courts are going to be more aware of the situation and more open to the requests on behalf of the township.
Thank you. I've been telling you, it's horrible living here.
We understand.
I'm I'm sorry you're being put through this. Unfortunately, we have process we have to file. Um, but talk to Mr. Assorti about perhaps initiating your own suit, you and your neighbors. And maybe you get his attention faster that way. It's absolutely unacceptable what we, what you've had to endure.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, and thanks for your, thanks for your patience. Brian, next.
Uh, Kevin Flavin.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. My name is Kevin Flavin. I live on Park Lane. I'd like to make comments about a decision that the Township Clerk, Uta O'Connor, to her ruling that Groseal twenty twenty candidate Mark Mills was ineligible to run for office on Groseal and will not even be able to vote here in the general election in November. It is my understanding that Clerk O'Connor has determined that because Mr. Mills and his family are temporarily living in his mother-in-law's Wyandotte House while he comprehensively renovates his one hundred and eight-year-old historic house on the island, he is no longer considered by Clerk O'Connor to be a permanent resident of Groseal. Similarly, Clerk O'Connor has ruled that Mr. Mills' wife and son are no longer residents of Groseal and therefore are not able to vote here in the upcoming election. I am not an attorney, but I researched this issue and found out that a person in Michigan does not lose his or her permanent address by temporarily living at another location as long as there is clear intent to return home. I spoke to offices of clerks in several downriver communities and asked them if I could register to vote there by temporary living in with a relative. They all told me this was not possible unless I transferred my permanent address. Furthermore, it is important to understand that a citizen does not have to own a house to vote in Michigan. The Michigan chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union issued a legal opinion that even the homeless can vote in this state. I got to know Mr. Mills during his recent campaign for Township Board. I was very impressed with his distinguished career in law enforcement, family values, and vision for Groseal. The fact that Mr. Mills and his wife are investing most of their life savings in renovating their house speaks volumes about their commitment to live on Groseal for decades to come. I think that Clerk O'Connor's decision to strip Mr. Mills of his right to seek public office on the island is grossly unfair. Even worse, Clerk O'Connor's disenfranchisement of Mr. Mills and his family members is totally unconscionable. Moreover, as a taxpayer, I'm very concerned that Clerk O'Connor's decision is depriving Mr. Mills and his family members of their civil rights in a manner that could subject the township to the risk of losing more costly litigation. Finally, I'd like to point out that Clerk O'Connor's decision is not just about Mr. Mills and his family. He, she has established a precedent that will apply to every islander who temporarily lives in another community for work, military service, major home renovations, or any number of other legitimate reasons. I ask the Township Board to review Clerk O'Connor's decision and urges her to respect the rule of law by restoring the rights guaranteed to the Mills family by the Constitution of Michigan and United States. Thank you.
Well, Madam Clerk. I don't, uh, we we both looked at the state statutes and the recent court decision in Macomb County, and your position is clearly within the law. It's it's, it's as clear as daybreak. And the ruling by Judge, by Judge Kelly in the Macomb County case said must live in the residence for thirty days prior to the filing date. It was unequivocal. It was a published opinion by a Macomb County Court. It applies to the state. And um, I think your decision is valid. Brian, who's next? Madam Clerk, do you have a closing comment since you were the one?
Okay, Rich Brower.
Rich, you're up.
Rich?
Hey, Brower. Yes, sorry. Hey, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, you know, speak for a second on, uh, you know, my disappointment in the decision of uh, returning the ownership of the tennis center back over to the airport. Um, you know, in my opinion, this was the doing of a couple of people on the, a couple of trustees that have issues with certain people, whether they be on the rec commission or the airport commission. Um, you know, they uh, they've been undermining us ever since day one on this. Um, I'm a rec commissioner. I'm also a citizen, of course, and, you know, tonight I'm speaking as a citizen, you know, but for us to volunteer the time that we put in for the better good of this community, um, we have nothing but the best of intentions for this township and for our citizens, for our children and our elderly, for things for them to do. And to see these people just going against everything that we're trying to do for their own objectives, it's very disheartening. Um, you know, there's a lot of people on this commission and a lot of people that are in favor of this. You know, and for for them to take it back and they want to possibly tear that building down. Uh, for one, it's a historic building. Secondly, it's not in as bad a shape as they say it is. And thirdly, you know, the cost of tearing that building down would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, I just wanted to speak my disappointment in their decisions tonight. It was uh, it was very disheartening for me.
Okay, Rich, I'm I'm sorry you feel that way. It was just where our our efforts are to take care of the building and nobody's, nobody's mentioned demolitions, but, you know, it it may, it may go back to rec, may go back. But for right now, we have to maintain the building and potentially pickle it off for the winter. So it's, but as long as I'm here, I will do my best to to make sure that building, it is an historic building, you know, and we need to preserve it. And I think it can be of good use to the residents regardless if airport is operating it or rec. So, but give us, give us time to get the right people doing the right things. Right now, it's empty.
We had, we had things.
Got to take care of it over the winter.
Right, and we we just had a meeting about this and, you know, we're hoping to work with the airport to kind of team up over the winter to keep it afloat and, you know, work out some sort of a deal that would work for everybody. You know, because of COVID, we haven't been able to do what we wanted to do. And, you know, we're hoping that by spring or next, you know, early, late in the winter or something that things would change, but you know, that's all off the table now, and our community is going to suffer as a result.
Well, time will tell, Rich, but thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Brian?
Okay, Mr. Jaeger.
Hey, good evening. Um, I'm 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 seriously concerned about the decision to revoke Mark and his family's rights to vote. I I know I ran on the GI twenty twenty slate and Mark was one of the members, but uh, there's plenty of service members on this island. There's plenty of soldiers, airmen, Supervisor Loftus, you were one yourself. So if you were away, serving in Afghanistan, sleeping in Afghanistan, you're telling me that you can't vote in Groseal because you no longer live here?
Not for a second. No, the the law has, the law has specific rights for deployed service.
Absolutely. It has nothing to do with service person.
Okay, so if I go stay at my parents' house in Florida for six months.
A year and a half.
So is there, in the statute, is there a time period?
You have to live in the address for thirty days prior filing date for 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 a public office, thirty days prior to voting.
So you're for thirty days prior to being able to vote?
That's that's my, that's what the what the statute says to my knowledge.
So where is Mark supposed to vote then?
To have the right to vote in your previous residence.
Which is Groseal.
Until you are validated to vote in your new residence. The the problem is not for most residents of the island. I think if Mr. Mills had not advertised that he'd been living in Wyandotte for a year and a half in, on Facebook, this might never have come to this. If he had a certificate of occupancy for his residence, this would not have become an issue. If he had rented a house on Groseal to live in, it would not have become an issue. This does not affect other servicemen. It does not affect people who are living outside the country. There are federal and state laws that protect their rights to vote. In fact, a um, an expatriate living outside the country can actually vote at an address that they no longer own if they can prove that was their last known address. So this is not an effort to try to disenfranchise, um, uh, you know, do a mass disenfranchisement. It's one case and one voter, and we're acting on what we believe the law says. If we're wrong, then um, that has yet to be shown. We believe we are correct.
I I guess my question would then be is where is Mark, his wife and children supposed to vote then? Like if they can't vote here.
They've been living, again, that that is not the issue that I can handle. As far as the voter challenge is concerned, the only thing we can determine does the, does that person who's been challenged have status as an elector based on residence? And based on the law as we read it, he does not. And and that's, that's all we can do in this situation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jameson. Let's, uh, Brian?
Um, and your name's chopped off a little bit on my screen, but Christopher Chapman, maybe?
Hey, it is Christopher Chapman. I I just wanted to take a few moments to um, thank you all that are um, on the outgoing board, uh, for your service to the township and uh, for for your patience as you read through all of our emails from here on Bellevue Road. I I just wanted to make a quick comment because I know that this offer is off the table and what have you, but receiving a letter written the way it was, if it would have said, you also can, we can only sell this to adjacent property owners, you also have the right to buy it. It didn't say that, and there was no public record or comment at previous board meetings about the offer to buy the property from the gentleman who made the offer. So it caused a lot of confusion. And um, I take with uh, um, uh, respect Supervisor Loftus's recommendation to just call. Um, in the future, though, if this happens in another parcel, maybe just take the advice to say, please reference this, this uh, um, you know, piece of, piece of township law as it applies to you or something instead of just a big, let us know what you think. Anyway, that being said, thank you for your time tonight. I'll keep it short.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Brian?
Oh, okay, uh, Geneva Reeves?
Ms. Reeves? Next.
Okay, Kenneth DeVito. Mr. DeVito? All right, moving on, uh, Groseal Marine?
I can hear you, Brian. You're you're, you are broadcasting.
Um, okay, how about Judy Ann?
Judy Ann is here, but I know this is going to shock you. I have nothing to say tonight, so.
Okay, well, welcome aboard, Judy Ann.
All right, uh, Mark Mills.
Hello?
Yes.
Hear me now, okay.
Hello? Yes, we can hear you, Mark.
Okay. Um, I guess I'm going to kind of, I guess I'm going to be careful what I say here. A lot of my communication between the township and Ms. O'Connor will be coming from the attorney very soon. Um, the decision that you guys made, you know, was wrong. Uh, this is my permanent domicile. I had every intention of coming back here. I was simply sleeping in another place because you, I guess, meaning the township, would not allow me to stay here without a CFO, and I understand. Um, my house is livable. Um, I have no intention of going anywhere else. Um, I spoke with the folks in Wyandotte and a few other communities. And I also did a little bit of back work on uh, Macomb Township and Fairhaven National Arena Bell with Mr. Assorti. Um, I have every right to vote here. I have every right to run as elector here. Um, I I did my research before I ran. There was nothing wrong with what I did. Um, I I think it's it's a disgrace that you're putting me in this position and you're putting the township in a bad position as well. Um, I'm very disheartened about your your decisions and the way the township has treated me in this entire process. Um, I'm an American citizen here and I have every right to run for a township seat here or a township office. Um, and the fact that Mr. Pfeiffer showed up at this meeting was no accident. I kind of know that for a fact. It was no surprise. So I guess at this point forward, um, I'm I'm very disheartened. I I I cannot believe the way the township has has treated me through this. All I've tried to do is create a nice environment for my family to live and raise around my family for the rest of the years here on this island. And I've been met with nothing but ridicule and nothing but can, the dissent with the neighbors here. Um, my previous residence, by the way, Ms. O'Connor, you said I could vote in my previous residence. That was on Lake Road, uh, on the south end of town here. Um, neighbors there were wonderful people. Um, neighbors there were wonderful people. No, 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 please don't cut me off.
I'm not cutting you off.
Please don't cut me off.
Only if you move.
Please don't cut me off. I have my three minutes. My previous address is on this island. I've lived on this island since 2014. What you people are doing to me is wrong, and you know it. And it will be taken care of through court. Thank you.
Okay. Brian?
All right, Debbie York.
Can you skip to the next person, and I need to get rid of some background noise? Would that be a problem, Brian?
No problem.
Just need a quick minute, and then if you'll go to someone else and get back to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Laura Malazo. Laura? All right, Mike Jurecki.
No, I'm just all ears tonight. No comment.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, Carol Rukowski. All right, um, Michelle Lacourse.
I don't know how to.
Yes.
Good evening. No, no comment.
Okay. Um, Colin Kohair.
Uh, no comment. Uh, everything, um, that I had interest in speaking on has been covered, and great meeting tonight, guys.
Thank, Colin, thanks for watching.
No problem.
Okay. I'll do one more, and I'll come back to Debbie. Uh, Greg Carmison.
Uh, no comment tonight.
Okay.
Thanks for watching, Greg.
Uh, Debbie York, are you ready now?
I am. Thank you for your patience. Um, I've got a sick one in the other room with the TV up. Um, actually, uh, you know, I was here to comment about the, uh, potential sale of property, which we were kind of led to believe that perhaps the board might be speaking about in a work session maybe tonight, um, and that it might be on the agenda, okay? And, um, I'm glad to hear that it's not on the agenda.
I'm trying to hear her.
Can you hear me? I, I'm glad it's not on the agenda. I'm glad it's been dismissed, but with all due respect, Mr. Loftus, I'm livid at the moment because tonight is the first time I have ever been told that that property could only be sold to an adjacent landowner. The only person who's ever told me that that property could not be developed was the potential purchaser. And the letter that came to us said, we have been approached by someone who has an interest in purchasing a piece of property and would welcome your comments. That's the communication we've received. End of discussion. And we've spent four weeks trying to get information about this, and I, I did want to reach out to Mr. Ream and express my condolences and my apologies for bugging the daylights out of him. Um, and I really appreciate how e- e- everybody that I've talked to in the township has been more than helpful. Now, I recognize I've been asking the wrong questions, but I'm really confused by that letter, Mr. Loftus. I mean, it said, it gave us no background information, and I know that not only did all of us in our individual letters, but in a collective letter, expressed interest in the opportunity to bid for it, or maybe the neighbors together going to get, together and bid for it. Not one response. You could have saved us a lot of angst if somebody clarified a little sooner, and I, I know everybody's busy, but that's just not a good way of doing business. And if I can just ask one more thing, we, there's some of us have spent a lot of time looking into this, and we have discovered that Township of Grozil happens to be the largest landowner on Grozil. To me, that was great news. We have all of this wonderful open space, recreation area, airport, but apparently the township owns property that I'm not sure how they acquired it. The law that I've been able to find out says for the public good. Um, and that they can sell it when it is no longer for the public good. So the question I have is, I don't want it to stop at this. I want to know, does the township own other properties similar to this? That's owned residential, that's not public space, that isn't protected space, that can be sold, and how did we acquire that? Why did we acquire that? And why, on what do we base the decision to sell that? And I haven't been able to find anything in the ordinances. Um, I've only, you know, looked at a little bit of law, so I'm asking you, I, I don't know if you have the answer to that, but I heard that, you know, these are things the township will have to look at. So the question is, what do we have? And what is the policy on that? And well, sleep better if I could get a little bit of an answer tonight. And I appreciate.
A little bit of an answer, Debbie, if you're ready.
Can I just say one other thing?
Sure.
Really, I am not a person that goes running around, well, I do run around like a chicken with my head cut off, but I'm not trying to cause trouble, and I try to do my homework first. And I do apologize for not calling you directly, Mr. Loftus. I made the mistake of listening to someone else who told me something that you said, which made me feel it wasn't worth the call, and I apologize. That is my bad, okay? I should have called you directly. Um, but now I've lost my train of thought. There's that chicken with the head cut off again. Um, but I would like to know kind of what the policy and procedure is for the township, especially when you're talking about, you know, costs that we're going to have a, it's, it's going to be a challenge to keep abreast of things, you know?
Okay, let me, let me, because we're, we're, we're running along here. Um, the township acquires, has acquired properties through, uh, uh, donations. People just didn't want to pay taxes anymore, so they gave it to the township. There was a time, uh, I'm going to say twenty years ago, when the big concern was development. So any parcel the township could pick up to preclude development, the Township Board at that time thought was the appropriate action. Uh, I was not on board at that time. Now with, uh, our revenues being strangled thanks to, uh, uh, a number of factors, uh, COVID, Prop A, Headley, where we're really struggling to pay our bills, uh, we may have to look into, and we have to, to getting that, some of that property back on the tax rolls if it's appropriate. Um, so that's, and that, we, there's no, the board will decide to accept properties. The board will decide, have the decision to divest properties unless they were on deed restrictions that precludes us doing that. But without deed restrictions, i- it's just a board decision for the, for the public good, and the public good is a very broad spectrum. So that's, that's what I can tell you in a nutshell on, on Township, and we do own hundreds of properties that, and I'd like to see a lot of them back in private hands, and I'd like to see tax, them generating tax revenue so that we can afford our police and fire departments and all those things we're trying to do to make this place better.
And is, uh, uh, before you would sell, and I do understand that, before you would sell a piece of property, is the, uh, under the law or procedure or whatever it is that dictates your ability, uh, allows you the right to do that, uh, does that mean that it has to go up for sort of public sale the same way as if you had seized property?
As far as I know, yes, we, I, I don't, I don't know.
Because I guess the question is, would, you know, it's, it's community property. We all own it. So if something like this was going to go up for sale, I sure would like to be sure that the community is aware of it so that they can weigh in, because it is their property. I mean, it, it doesn't belong to eight people on a board. It belongs to a community, so it'd be great to get clarification on what the laws, the statutes, the ordinances, um, are when it comes to this, so that we know ahead of time.
Okay, well, if it.
And I mean it with the greatest of respect, because why anybody would want to run for public office is beyond my comprehension, because you can never make everybody happy, so I do mean this with the utmost of respect, so thank you.
Okay, tha- thanks, Debbie.
You're welcome.
Brian?
All right, uh, Linda Stanko.
Uh, I'm good. Thanks, Brian.
Okay.
Thanks for watching, Linda.
Chris Lynn.
No comment.
Therese Hunter.
Uh, just want to thank the board for their service, um, and I look forward to the, um, work, um, the five-year plan for the Recreation Department. And, um, I have to compliment, uh, Debbie York. I agree with a lot of her comments, and I would ask that those of you who are in serving, currently serving on the board, that you would, um, you know, reflect and consider a lot of the questions that she raised to you today and, and uh, in making your future decisions regarding selling piece, you know, parcels of land in the way that it was communicated out, and that's all.
Thanks, Terry.
And finally, Kathleen Conley.
Well.
That's it.
I guess, okay, well, in that case, we have a public comment.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, um, say my intention was not to cut off Mr. Mills. I don't want to leave that impression. I was simply trying to clarify when I said that you can, there, there's a time limit associated to when a, a person moves before an election that they can vote one more time in their prior precinct. Um, there is a time limit associated to that, and I did not mean to be disrespectful um, in, and try to cut him off. I was simply trying to, um, clarify what I had said. Secondly, um, uh, Mr. Assorti and, uh, I will be talking, um, about the comments that were made tonight, and, uh, we will not let it land there. So thank you for your comments, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Melvesto?
Uh, Brian, do you have, um, Jody Moore wanted to speak this evening. Do you have her on the screen or?
I do not.
All right, well, I'm gonna, if, if, if it's all right, I'll, I'll speak on her behalf then. Uh, this past weekend, there was an event at the, at Tales on Macomb, and, uh, they were able to, uh, microchip fifteen, uh, different pets. And if I get it, if I get the information correctly, uh, to date, and I'm not sure what that period of time is, uh, they have been able to adopt out, uh, thirty-five animals. So, uh, they are providing a service as, as they, that they intended to, uh. Always wish them well. Thanks for what they're doing. So, uh, you know, on behalf of Jody, I hope that's the information that she wanted to get out. Uh, and sort of like a rebuttal, just like, uh, Clerk O'Connor. Uh, if I, if I miss, if I, whether I understood Rich Brower correct or not, he seemed to think that there were two board members responsible for the removal of the, uh, rescinding of the contract uh, in regards to the building thirty-nine. Uh, once that was passed by the board, all further, all further conversation in regards to that building, uh, was over. It, it ended. The fact that that contract or the agreement uh, was rescinded was a, was a, an action that took place, uh, by the Airport Commission itself. It had nothing to do with any of the board members. So I'd like, if, if, if I misunderstood him, I just might want to correct him on that. It was not a board action. Uh, the board was asked to vote on it, which we did this evening. But, uh, it was at the direction of the Airport Commission, and if, if I'm wrong on that, I apologize, but I, I just wanted to get that clarified.
I guess consider it clarified. Thanks, Tom.
Great.
All right, let's, uh, anything else? Board members? Mr. Burdley?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
I'm in support.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll call the meeting adjourned at, uh, ten, eleven PM Eastern Daylight Time. And, uh, see you on the twenty-eighth. Thanks, thanks, everyone, uh, those watching at home, uh, the board, uh, we got a lot, we got a lot of work done tonight. Thanks again.